All right, there's seven thirty-two. Ready to go?
Yes.
Okay.
We're ready.
So Elaine Snyder, so seven thirty-two Roxbury, Connecticut on January tenth, two thousand twenty-two. I'd like to call the meeting to order now and seat the members. And tonight we have regulars. Kim Tester, Jim Conway, myself. And we have three alternates now. Who was last seated among you alternates?
Who? I don't know. I think it might have been me.
You or me? One of us.
That's right. All of our regular members were there in December, so we didn't.
Right.
Yeah.
We didn't have to see, so I don't have my previous minutes.
I think it was November and I, well, I think it was me.
You were in November, Candy.
I thought so.
Alan, Alan.
Oh, there's Alan. Alan's joining.
Alan just checked in.
Okay, so now it's moot.
So, hi Alan. All right. So Cheryl and Candy have last been seated? Is that what we determined?
Yeah, one of us.
But now it's moot because we have Alan. So we have all our five members here.
Elaine.
Three, four.
Oh, we don't have Elaine. Oh. My mistake, Kim. How did it? How did that pass me by?
All right, so we'll see the regular members. Kim Tester, Jim Conway, Alan Johnson. And for Elaine, we'll seat Chris and myself. And for Elaine, we'll see Chris Hargerty type.
Okay.
All right. And that's it. We're seated and we're ready to have our meeting.
Yeah, I just checked my notes and our meeting in November, I was seated. It was Jim, Kim, Bill. Yeah, I was seated for Alan. Oh, and Cheryl, you were there for Elaine.
So that's what I saw. Yeah.
Chris, you're on the hot seat, so you're seated tonight.
Hi, Chris.
Chris is on board tonight.
All right, so let's start the meeting in a public comment. There is no public comment. Is that right, Karen?
That is correct.
All right, so we'll go to, we'll move to approve the meetings of December, the meeting of December thirteenth. Has everyone had a chance to read those minutes?
Yeah, this is Kim. I have, it was a, Chris's name was spelled wrong. Chris, you have two G's in your name?
Yes.
Yep. So under, yep.
Okay, thank you. Got that.
All right, everyone's happy with last month's meetings? So I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Jim Conway moves to approve them any second.
I'll second.
Kim seconds. So the meetings in December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one were approved. So the next thing is I moved John Cody up to this spot so he wouldn't have to hang around while we talk about other things. But I got a message from him that he and Chris and Jill are committed to something tonight, so John's not going to be at the meeting, so we will not have a Z E O report. Did you get an email from him, Karen?
I did.
And did he have any comments as to what, any violations or anything, any enforcement?
He did not have anything to share with us.
Okay, so John's not here. The Z E O report we're gonna have. And so we'll dive right into ongoing review of current regulations. And the first one, we have a couple additions what's on the agenda. The first one is political signs. And Kim and I talked about that, and it appears that Jimmy Herbert corrected that. Is that how you understand it? All right, so political signs, we don't have to discuss. The next is
I'm sorry, who corrected it?
Jimmy, Jimmy.
We're making an assumption that he did because we actually went in, because in the fall, you know, when we were looking at it, it was a correction, a change in the regulation that was made in two thousand four. And that was never changed in the regulation. So a new section was started called political signs. And then where political signs were indicated under a different place that was just never removed as it was supposed to have been done. And it didn't come up, and we were talking about it, it didn't come up because no one's had political signs up for years. And it wasn't until this fall when there were signs that people actually looked at the regulation. Isn't that funny? I just think that's really funny. So that, you know, the town hasn't had to deal with it in that long, that amount of time. So that's why it was never found. So it was a clerical error. And it looks like, and I gotta assume that Jimmy's the one that pulled it out because he's the one that has his hands in it, so.
Well, there's nothing pressing, so we can just keep it open till next meeting, just to confirm that he, that he
Yeah, I would, I would just like to know what the actual change was that.
Okay, so
And I can research that, actually.
All right, we'll leave that open till next meeting.
It may have been a footnote or a numbering issue, to tell you the truth.
No, it was actually a section, something that was, and there was actually a wording that was supposed to have been taken out, and it wasn't taken out this fall. That's when we saw it. Or Jim said something.
Removal signs, isn't it?
Yeah.
The signs.
Having to do with the removal? Okay.
Yeah, Karen, I can actually tell you, once I look at it, I can tell you what section it was taken out of.
Okay, that's what I was after.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Kim.
Yep.
All right, so let's go into site plan, section seven. Gail indicated that it could have been better written at our meeting a couple of months ago, and and the part that I relate to not reading the whole section seven is or is it say, oh, in the very first sentence, what I, we had, we had an application a few months ago. And for this reason, I had to vote no, because I voted no to deny the application, because in this section I read any permitted use, which is right in the first, right in the first sentence. And I didn't know, and I've never seen it written, that because section seven is follow section site plan, that'd probably be section six, that it, that it becomes subordinate to section six. And therefore, the site plan, it didn't matter that, that permitted use was there because this whole section related to the site plan section. But I never saw that in writing it, and so I, I just took it verbally and I voted against this application because of that wording right there. For we need a site plan, shall accompany application for any permitted use or special permit. So because there's an inference there that I didn't get, we can correct that one specific aspect of this section seven that I, I related to by just removing any permitted use. So if we move application shall, site plan will accompany any special permit use. So if we eliminate any special permit use, my issue with this section will be corrected. So is there more to it?
No, Bill, I think, you know, the section six has to do with special permit, so and section seven was to be only for special permit. So what you're saying makes sense that when you delete let's get your dogs. A site plan as prescribed in this section shall accompany the application for special permit.
So what you're saying, you're paraphrasing.
So yes, I'm just, you're right.
Deleting any permitted use, those three words.
Any permitted use or?
Or, yeah, for any special permit. And that would be then correct, it would confirm what was inferred by this section being subordinate to the previous section.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So we have to know if that's, if we're all in agreement for that. Are we? I mean, does anyone have any questions about this?
Yeah, is a, is a site plan still required for permitted uses or is it not required?
Not, not specifically. Because this application was for residential use. And apparently it wasn't. It was deemed that it wasn't needed.
Okay.
I thought it was. So do we know? You know, there's no way we can possibly know all the regulations all the time, even if we use them all the time. Does anyone know? I don't have the regulations in front of me right now, but does anyone know if a site plan is needed for other permitted uses? And I would suspect probably it is. But I would also suspect that that specifying a site plan for some other use happens before the section six. And therefore, not being, not being inferred as being subordinate. Because as I understand, it's understood that because this section followed the previous section site plans, it was automatically assumed that this section related to site plans and not anything before that.
Bill, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Does everyone, is everyone comfortable with the very last sentence of paragraph one? Which basically says that all this can be waived at the discretion of the Z E O.
Good point, Jim. Yeah.
So it's like, right there sums up the whole paragraph. It's up to the Z E O if he wants to push it through, or if he wants to let this one, maybe that should come out.
Yeah, so therefore that's I didn't go far enough because that last sentence negates
Everything.
permitted use or special permit. So because of that last sentence, Jim, we don't really need to change this then. Even though, even though Gail said it was weak, weekly, I forget what the term she used, that it could have been written better.
I would think the commission, I like your idea of taking out for any permitted use and just stick with special permit, but I would also take out that last sentence. I mean, we're writing a reg and then we're turning it all over to one person to decide whether we're gonna use it or not.
You can't, it'd be hard to argue with that, Jim. I think that's, that's a good idea, too.
I mean, these are our regulations and it should be left up to us to make sure they're properly enforced and not another individual.
Yeah, there's some overlap and redundancy, and, you know, it could have been written better. It's always easy to Monday morning quarterback, but we're doing that now. So if we remove any permitted use and we remove the last sentence.
Right.
Do we have to have, can we do that ourselves?
Well, I believe you're gonna require a public hearing.
Okay, so because that's quite a change.
Yeah, it, it makes a huge impact on the, on the regulation.
Well, there's, there's nothing pressuring us right now, but we could start the ball rolling for a public hearing on this correction. Should we digest this section for another, until next meeting and make that decision in case we find other things that need changing.
One of the things that at this time would be good to mention is the, the affordable housing plan that all our towns are coming up with. And one of the recommendations way back when it started in affordable housing plan was to lessen the burden of permits, applications in, in a building process to make it more user friendly to the applicant and less costly. And by removing any permitted use, then financially and time wise, the applicant doesn't have to go through section seven. So that's a huge savings in time and money for an accessory apartment, addition, whatever. So anyway, by making these more user friendly and less involved is kind of what that housing plan was leaning towards.
So we can critique this section, put this, defer it till next meeting, critique it to see if we can pick it apart anymore to make it, to make, to make it easier for applicants. There's no, there's no rush to do this right now. Is it, so what harm would, what harm would there be in that?
I think that's a good idea. Honestly, I haven't read it through carefully. You know, there's certain things that, you know, just, you know, reviewing at the, the beginning of it, like what you, we've just done, but thinking of it in those terms, I think would be helpful to have time.
Well, we should table this, if that's what we do, until next meeting and we'll have a chance. I know I came to a dead stop when I saw the parts that I was concerned about, and I wasn't tempted to read anymore. So I'm, I'm happy to put it off till next meeting and then we can vote on it and have a, to have a, a public hearing.
You know, one of the things when I, I'll never forget, when I first started on the commission, I was so overwhelmed. I thought, how God's name am I gonna know these regulations? And I realized I was never gonna know the regulations. Was, I was, I was only gonna know the things that came up, you know, when we needed to know them, that's when I was gonna understand them. I think, Jim, you're the one that helped me with that because I, I just didn't know what the heck was going on. So I think as we go through these, and it's important for you guys to know that, that's, that's how we use them, right? How we get to know them is by reading them when we can put it toward something that makes sense, but anyway, I just wanted to say that with Chris on the committee and all that, it's like, oh my gosh. But, you know, as you go along, you realize when you read them again, too, and you have some experience, then it starts to make sense in a lot of different ways that I never really thought about until, you know, time had gone on, so.
As much as we read them, I mean, you can read them with some application and six months later, you've forgotten what you read. You, we, there's no way we can possibly memorize all these regulations. So it forces us to, to read and critique and go over these and see if we should make changes or eliminate them. So, okay, so we'll, we'll look it over ourselves during the next month, and we'll have this on the agenda for next, for February's meeting. Does everyone agree with that?
Yeah, sounds great.
Good, all right. That's section seven.
So, Bill, we wouldn't table it, but we would continue it to next month.
Continues the word.
Right.
Yep. So I found a little thing yesterday which surprised me, and I can't believe that I'm saying that this interested me, interesting, interested in public acts and sections. I must have been pretty bored or COVID isolation has gotten to me, but section, Julie, can you pull up section three, ten, eleven?
Not if it's not in the meeting material. I can't.
It's on page seventeen.
So let me scroll there.
Yeah, Julie, that, it's not in the meeting materials.
Okay, no, I can't do it.
Can't, you can't pull it up from the
I could have done it ahead of time.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I came upon this yesterday, but I thought it was important to bring up because we're doing, we're tweaking regulations and reviewing them now, so this is a tweak and a go over. Chris, can you, it's one paragraph, can you read it?
A non-conforming building or structure or non-conforming portion thereof, which is damaged or destroyed by fire, explosion, or act of God or other casualty, may be rebuilt or restored to the same non-conforming building or structure as legally existed before such damage. Provided the work to restore or rebuild is started within one year of the date of damage and completed within two years of such damage that the dimensions, location on a lot and use remain unchanged or more nearly conform with these regulations, that such work shall adhere to all procedures necessary to obtain a proper zoning permit for such work. Further, for historic barns, the special requirements of section four point three point eight point five shall also apply to such rebuilding or restorations.
What page was that on, Chris?
Seventeen.
And Chris, you're reading from the zoning regs online?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the PDF.
Yep.
Okay.
That was
Go ahead.
That was three, ten, what? Three?
Three, ten, eleven.
Eleven.
Okay. So I can speak to that. It's because that's, that's the non-conformity that we just cast.
Yes, but this, this non-conformity is negated by Public Act seventeen dash thirty-nine, state, public act seventeen thirty-nine, which says, I'll read it. It's, it's, it talks about act clarifying the continuation of non-conforming uses of buildings and structures.
What's the date on that?
That's June ninth, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, so this Gail wrote that section, the, this, the one on the fire, because what was in there prior was illegal. And so that I would have to go to her with that because she specifically indicated that we, that section, that piece had to be written to update based on legal precedent. So it, I, I can't go into the details of that. She'd have to talk about it because she wrote that.
So what you're questioning or suspect or whatever is that a public act doesn't have priority, a state public act doesn't have priority over our regulations?
I don't know whether two thousand seventeen is now obsolete.
But this is a state regulation.
No, I know, but I don't know if there's something after it. I mean, she, we just did this in the fall, so.
Okay, so, so this can also be deferred. What's the word, Karen?
Continue.
Continue. Because I'll just read what this says. Such regulations shall not terminate or deem abandoned a non-conforming use, building or structure unless the property owner of such use building or structure voluntarily discontinues such use, building or structure, and such discontinuance is accompanied by an intent to not reestablish such use, building or structure. The demolition or deconstruction of a non-conforming use, building or structure shall not by itself be evidence of such property owner's intent to not reestablish such use of building or structure. So keep this in mind, we'll, we'll continue this because if this is true, which is a state public act, if it is true, that says there's, the two years doesn't matter because a non-conformity that's destroyed can last in perpetuity, can remain a non-conformity, and there's no time limit to rebuild it, according to public act, to this public act. So we can continue this also.
Yeah, I think it's a really good question for Gail, so maybe you can
Sure.
Yeah, throw that to her because she, as I say, she wrote that section.
No, that's
That'd be great.
It's just, you know, it's, I just, I can only interpret what I read.
Yeah.
You know, and, and what I read here contradicts or supersedes or rules our regulations. So we'll check into that. All right?
That's great.
So the next thing is well, let's do something simpler first because the last, this next thing is, might be a little more complicated, maybe not. Last meeting, the waiting, meeting before, we had, the last public hearing when we voted, it was brought to our attention, whether you did, Jim, or how, how it came to our attention, that we, when we vote for something to, to accept some application or public hearing, we have to state why we voted for or against it. Right?
Correct.
We determine that that wasn't quite right. We have to create a reason a unified reason that the board in general voted something for or against. When we vote, the second we accept something or deny something, the case is closed. We voted, it's denied or it's accepted. How do we, we have to figure out some way to come up with a statement. We can't do it in one second after we have our vote. We have to accompany our vote with a reason that we denied or accepted something.
The way Gail explained it early on, because she picked up on it, that all five of us were giving five individual reasons. And she said it should be somewhat of a consensus of the five voting members. And if you deny something, you don't have to give a reason.
Okay, so we just accept.
That's, yeah, if, if you accept something, so prior to the vote, we kind of come to a consensus of why this, what we're voting on would be the correct thing. Instead of five different reasons, agree for one reason. That was Gail's. For years and years, we all gave different reasons.
Okay.
She should say, she did say we should somewhat have one reason that we all agreed upon.
So if we all knew we were gonna vote for it, we could have a prepared reason ahead of time?
Yeah.
But technically, we, we're not, you know, the vote's supposed to be a surprise, even though we might know how everyone's gonna vote.
Well, you, you start off with a motion to approve this amendment. Somebody makes a motion to approve this amendment. So right away, and then somebody will second that motion. And then you can discuss it, why? And then you vote, and so it starts off with a motion to approve which Gail said that we should do that as well. So motion to approve because it's going to add more flexibility to for people to do what they want with their property, yada, yada. And if that's the reason, everybody, there's a second, all in favor, aye. And if, then if there's opposed, that it might get voted down at that time. That's my understanding.
We don't need a reason if it's opposed.
Right.
The vote was over and done with.
Right.
If you accept it.
Yep.
We have to give a reason. It's just
Pretty much, yes, you gotta give some sort of
How do you create that reason so quickly, technically?
Well, I know what we've done in, in the discussions, you know, I would be writing down words of things that people said. And so let it be some repetition to that, so we didn't, you know, so it'd be saying it once, like it's good for the town.
As we discussed it the previous month.
No, no, even at that time.
At the meeting, just prior to the vote.
Right, okay, so then we'd have to take a five minute recess after the vote and put a little, something and put a little something together.
No, we just do it while, in the meeting while we're talking.
Okay, and just a discussion. So it'll be a, an approval, but then it'll be us discussing why we approved it.
Yep.
And someone was, I think it, we should just summarize this and that'll be our reason.
And then we have a motion, right?
You have the motion to approve.
Based on.
Based on the reason the person makes the motion to approve, because I think this would be a good thing for the entire town of Roxbury, you know, throw anything in there positive, why we're, and then if every vote, it votes in favor, it was for that reason.
Okay. And if, if it's, if we vote against it, we don't need a reason.
No.
So we, we can use our reason if we need it and we have it ahead. We have a positive statement that we've.
Before we talk, even call for a vote and we make a motion to approve, uh, we've already discussed why we're making that motion to approve.
Okay.
I believe that's the way she wanted it done.
Well, when we, when we have our next vote, whatever that may be, we'll just have this in the back of our, you know, back of our head. We'll, we'll be prepared for it. So that, is that, is that.
Yeah.
Is that satisfied everyone that's being.
Because it's, it's, we've already discussed it and we've already discussed why the motion was made to approve.
Okay.
And then you make the motion before you call for the vote. Then you call for a vote and if everybody is in favor, it's for that reason we discussed.
So it'll just, it'll just be part of our discussion.
Yeah.
A short discussion before.
And that would be part of the approval. That reason has to be part of the approval.
Okay. So at worst, we'd have to just drag it off for a minute or two until we sorted out the words of our reason.
Reason, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the reason's become part of the motion.
Correct.
So.
So the actual vote is a very insignificant part. All the discussion prior to the vote is important.
All right, so that, that should, that should, we're just aware of it now. That should be pretty smooth.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, I want Kim because Kim's on the Court of Housing Group. Uh, there, I don't really know exactly what's going on as most of us don't. Uh, but maybe Kim can bring us up to speed. I want to get to Kim, but just before we do that, I, I went, I didn't overlook this, but I, there's, there's one more thing we can start talking about and we talked about this for years and that's Zone A. Uh, a favorite subject that's been on the table for years. And, uh, uh, does everyone know about Zone A? Does anyone not know about Zone A? Uh, Chris, are you familiar with Zone A?
I'm familiar with the different zones. I'm not specifically familiar with what the.
Okay.
What the color keys are.
Yep, so, uh, Cheryl and Candy, you're familiar with it?
I didn't.
You will be. There it is. Julie's got it for us. Uh, Zone A is a, I'll read it. It's here. Scroll it down just a little bit, Julie. That's the second page. Go back to the first page.
That's good.
There it is. There it is, right there. All right, I'll just read it. Residential Zone A, this district focuses on the grouping of historical and architecturally significant buildings in the village, the village area of Roxbury. The character and appearance of the district and individual buildings is important. The district comprises the area of a circle having a radius of three quarters of a mile. Its center, the monument on the green. Lots to have a minimum area of three acres, at least two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, uh, of which ninety percent of it has to be fifty feet in depth. So the the, the problem with Zone A, Julie, will you pull up the, the yellow map? There it is. This is how Zone A is defined and it's absolutely unusable and not practical. And if we ever had to do anything with this zone, uh, I don't, it's, it's three acre zone, but if you look at, uh, any of the lots uh, and the circumference and the edge, most of them are uh, bisected one way or another. Some in four acre zone, some in three acre zone. So if you take lot on Cedar Ridge, nine dash thirty-six, that's like two thirds, two thirds, four acres on and one third three acres on. So if something has to be done relative to zoning, the land on a lot, do we make that a three and three point four acre zone? So it's not, it's, it's, it's silly and
I believe.
I don't know when this was written.
I believe in the past, Bill, the, uh, if the zone that had the largest number of acres, whether it's A or C, was the zone that you had to, you had to follow the regulations for that zone.
Is that in our regulations somewhere still, Jim?
I believe it is. We always went with, uh, you, the, the, if, if the lot was bisected by A and C, if the majority of the lot was in C, they had to abide by the regulations for C. If the majority of the lot was in A, they abided by the regulations for A.
Well, if that's the case, um, I guess we could live with not changing this, but, uh, it's quite unique or unusual or different to create a zone in a circle. Uh, most, uh, legal descriptions of, uh, landmarks and use are dealt with typically with, uh, meets and bounds.
Right.
Meets being M E T E S and bounds and, uh, meets and bounds are rivers, roads, stakes, natural and man-made landmarks. Uh, and that very clearly, clearly defines a specific lot. So you don't get into an argument and have to have A two surveys for every lot to determine what percentage of the lot is Zone A and what is Zone, uh, B and what happens if it's perfectly half and half? What, what do you give it to then? So we can, we could use meets and bounds and there's a map that I took a while, probably a year when I was an alternate years ago. Uh, and I stood on every piece of land in this Zone A and just with my eyeballs kind of summed it up. And I went to Lyme, Connecticut, but more specifically Easton, Connecticut, which has two zones. Easton has two acre zone and one acre zone. One acre zone has city water, but regular septic. Two acre zone has wells and septic. And that's done with meets and bounds and it's, uh, it's separated and defined by Beer's Road and, uh, Jesse Lee Drive. The north, everything north of those two roads, they, they cross Sport Hill Road, which is a north and south road. The two roads I just mentioned are east, west, they're horizontal. Um, so everything north of Jesse Lee Drive and Beer's Road is two acre zone and everything south is one acre zone. And it, it's very specifically bought. And I don't know, we may be the only town in the state that has a delineation of zoning like this. So I thought it was, uh, probably best to pursue defining a piece of property with meets and bounds. And that's with this, the other map, uh, that Julie, can you pull that multi-colored map up? All right. There's the same relative property, but done with meets and bounds. And when I went through this, this, um, this, the color code on this is, uh, I forget what, what they were, but I, I just wanted to reference each lot. The color code is the purple lots are parcels owned by the town churches or open space. The red is parcels with less than four acres. The dark green is over four acres with geological potential, meaning no wetlands or no big outcroppings. And the lighter green is over four acres, but questions on frontage, wetlands or topography. So what we need to discuss is do you think it's necessary to redefine Zone A with meets and bounds versus the circle? That's the question I'm.
And I think you, you're gonna build upon this decision if we change the size of the lots in Zone A. Not just to change the boundaries, but to continue going forward with making more changes within those boundaries.
Well, that would be potential, no matter what we did.
Right, but it would be harder to do that in a circle situation.
I, I think it'd be pretty darn impossible to do.
We would lose any lot in your, back to your circle, any lot with the majority in C, we couldn't make it work even with the portion in A.
Well, this won't.
This here would, the acreage thing would be, my question is, are we gaining acreage or losing acreage?
When I put this together, I had a, uh, I had a, uh, oh, I, I can't show it to you now because Julie's on the screen, but I had a color map and I color coded everything. And when I, when Jimmy and I put this prettier map together, um, we made sure that no one went from Zone B to Zone A. No one lost. Uh, no one lost acreage. It's more advantageous to have four acres than it is three or being a four acres or, no, backwards. It should be, you're better off in a three acre zone with four acres and four acres than a three acre zone. So Jim, looking down the road like you, like you're mentioning, it, it, it would certainly, I would think it would have to be done down the road. I don't know how it would be madness to try and make sense out of arcs, uh, property lines with our properties divided by arcs than by meets and bounds.
But no, I totally agree. The circle isn't that. I mean, it's been part of Roxbury since zoning began. And it's, like I said earlier, it's pretty simple described. If the larger portion is in C, then you're considered C. If the larger portions in A, you're considered A.
And, and how do we work meets and bounds into that description?
No, we'd have to change it, uh, but we could make, we could make smaller, we could make smaller lots, we could make less road frontage, we could make less interior, smaller interior lots. We could do all that if even with the circle.
Yes, we could.
You know, but I think that I like the idea of, of a, a very definitive boundary line. I totally agree with you.
It's totally difficult.
Um, it's not necessary to go forward. We can still do everything we want to do if, you know, this goes to public hearing and say it gets shot down. That doesn't mean we're, we're gonna stop with the smaller lots and smaller frontage and stuff like that. But if the people agree, uh, to change the boundaries, um, I think that's a smart thing to do.
Yeah, like I say, we can, oh, again, we don't have, we're not gonna do this today. And if we look over these maps, uh, if we decide to continue, uh, I'll make sure that the next, I'll hand deliver the, the few of us here. I'll get the big map so you have the big mac map to look at. It's much nicer. You don't need your glasses to read it and, you know, to have, you, it's, it's interesting to look at and think about and we'll have that. I'll get it to all of you and we'll have that for discussion, due to discussion. It's the next meeting.
Zone A currently, if I read, just off the top of my head, is somewhere around twelve hundred acres. The circle.
Yeah.
And if we go to meets and bounds, like you say, I'd like to see increase Zone A get a little larger. And you kind of showed it on one of the lots down off Apple Lane that is quite a large lot and a very small portion of it was in A currently. So he's definitely a C. But when you did your boundaries, he became all A. So we gained a lot of buildable land for Zone A by doing that.
So Bill, Bill, when you did that, you actually looked at anyone who whose land touched or anything that was included in A, then the whole piece became A?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's definitely an increase. Okay.
We're gonna gain, yep.
Yeah, but this is not some drastic thing because right now Zone A is three acres, Zone B is four acres and we're in Roxbury with outcroppings and wetlands and irregular shaped roads and, uh,
Uh, Zone, Zone B is three acres. Zone C is four acres.
Oh, so, okay, you're right, you're right. Um, right, uh, so, um.
Zone B is just that small corner down by Southbury Boat. Correct.
Yeah.
That's right, yep.
So.
We're, we're A and C.
Right.
Well, we. Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, I was gonna say, I think, I think it makes sense going forward to have something that's more easily, um, defined, as Jim said too.
I agree.
You know, because, you know, if we go and try to make any adjustments to lots sizes or village center or any of that going forward, you know, however long that is down the road, um, it's gonna be so much easier to make that happen and to at least decide where, where that is because a circle, you just can't. I mean, you can do it, but it's just gonna be confusing, I think.
And no one in Zone A is gonna lose. Uh, they're, they're only gonna gain. No, no one in any zone is gonna lose. And in addition to that, if you become Zone A and you were in Zone B.
C.
C rather, you, um, someone holds a gun to your head and says you have to anything with it. It's just, your land is better defined.
No, I agree.
It doesn't change a thing except it makes it a typical description of land like all other pieces. So, um, all right, so that's the introduction. Chris and Candy and Cheryl, uh, I think we tossed this around a little bit before you guys were on the board, uh, on the commission. Um, so if you have any other questions, general questions right now. What's that?
No, it's Nancy Vaughn.
Oh.
Nancy Vaughn is not muted.
The, uh, if I could just say, the, um, I think the section that applies to when the circle bisects a particular lot and it's in two zones is two point three point four, where the boundary between Zone A and Zone C divides a lot. The use of the entire lot shall be governed by the more restrictive conditions applicable to each of the zones. So it's not done by the percentage of the property that's in a particular zone. It's, it's, it gets the more restrictive rules applied to it, I believe.
You could have three percent of the lot in, in a more restricted and the whole lot becomes more restricted.
Correct.
Say that again, Alan.
So.
If you had just a little corner of your lot in the the more restricted zone, the, your whole lot would become that restricted.
And that'll be based on what, who determines? And that'll be based on what, who determines what's more restrictive and what's not.
I was gonna ask that question. Which one's more restrictive?
C is more restrictive than A.
Okay.
Four versus three is the restriction.
Right.
Can't think of anything else. Yeah.
Oh, there's no, that's the only difference in the, between the different zones is acreage. It isn't coverage or anything like that, that.
Does that dog have a vote?
Chris, what were you reading from a section? I'm sorry, Chris.
My dogs are, are barking at a coyote.
Oh, um, that's good. We like that. That's fun.
It's two point three point four.
Okay, thanks.
So it was in the prior section to this, the one we're showing here.
Right. Yeah, but it doesn't matter if ten percent of the property is in zone A. It, it gets all of the regulations.
Right. So in what Bill drew, the opposite would happen. So it, with what, the way he looked at it was that if there was a little bit in zone A, it will all be in zone A instead. So it's, it would be the opposite.
Well, that's why I meant, no one would lose.
Yeah, yeah.
We wouldn't create a hardship or loss in value or anything by having a redefinition, a redefined, uh,
I think it changes the intent of the regulation though.
Yeah, that, that would have to be changed too, you know, because uh, once, it's like, it's like this whole domino effect. When you make one change, then you see what else affects it. Which is kind of fascinating, actually, you know, when you think about that. And that's why it's so important that we think ahead, you know, before things are changed.
I think it, it really, a street or a, or river or something, some thing should, should be the boundary. It just was the monument. It could have been one on a flagpole or a the stop sign or anything of that nature. This was very arbitrarily chosen back when they set it up and not any thought was given to it. Now, well, we're trying to take our way out of it.
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do any of this today, but we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll continue this. And I'll make sure that you all have the big maps in the next couple of weeks. I'll have to carry them to you and we'll continue this next meeting. Yes? Shall we?
Sure.
You know, if we discuss it more now, we're discussing things hypothetically.
Yeah.
We can discuss things in more first and more meet next meeting where we have a bigger map and we think about this.
You know, this is the thing that, that we miss about being in person because we would all be hanging around this one map on the table. See it, so.
Have to see my map that I made. Those are all hand colored.
Yeah.
Magic markers. I walked around, this, this paper was wet from rain and wetlands and everything else. So Jimmy got this and he made it prettier. So there's my color code up there. So but I'll have you, uh, I'll have you, I'll get Jimmy's big map and, uh, we'll discuss this more intelligently. Not that we weren't intellectual tonight, but we'll, we'll discuss it in more depth. Okay, do you share?
Sounds good.
All right. Chris, we heard from you. All right. So let's go on to the, uh, what's next?
The role of alternates.
What's that?
The role of alternates.
Uh, that, no.
One other one.
We got one other thing and it's called Kim.
Oh, sorry.
Kim's gonna give us a, uh, little review of what's happening on the affordable housing.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so, um, Jim's on this committee, uh, committee as well. It's the Affordable Housing Steering Committee. Um, the, it's, we're state mandated to prepare this plan, affordable housing plan. Every town is to do that and be done. I think we'll be late with it on, along with a much, bunch of other towns that started a little late, uh, by June of, of this year. And, um, so what we have done so far, we've, the town has hired Jocelyn Ayers, uh, who was formerly from the Northwest Hills Council of Governments to write the plan and to guide us through the process. So we're meeting, uh, every third Thursday and um, we came up with, uh, she suggested, uh, survey questions and we added a few more. We had and hopefully you all filled it out, but it was a, uh, housing survey that went out several times. Um, and we will, we extended it, uh, and so we'll get the more updated um, numbers, uh, with this next meeting that we have this month. Um, but some of the, a, a couple of questions that were added to the survey, uh, one was specific to our, um, accessory apartment regulation, asking if people knew that it existed. And if, uh, so, you know, if they happen to have an accessory apartment, you know, what did they use it for, you know? So that, that's interesting. And again, once we have more, there were only two hundred and fifty people who had filled it out. So, um, uh, as of the last time before we extended it. So we'll get a more, more, um, more results in, uh, to see if it changed. And then the other was to ask what people thought about the multifamily housing. It's a housing that is attached up to four units, which I think you remember that question too. So those were specific to our commission in essence, you know, um, but it's kind of, it was very interesting just to see, you know, a lot of times people were, you know, it was like a third said yes, a third said no, and a third said, I don't know. I need more information. So, um, you know, there were a nice wide variety, uh, people being open to seeing what we were, you know, what, what could be coming down the pike and, um, just needing more information. So we are gonna have a uh, housing, uh, plan, town hall, kind of information session uh, on Thursday, January twenty seventh. It's, it's, it's tough having any kind of a town meeting uh, in this Zoom format, but we are going to do that and it's not gonna be, people aren't going to be able to speak, but they will be, we will have the chat section open at the bottom, which it's not during our meetings along the bottom of Zoom. And that will be open and people will be able to write in their questions and then we will, uh, answer the questions. So it will, you know, we'll answer them in the order that they came. So, you know, and that'll be published through the email of the town email that goes out. Um, our next meeting and people are invited to that anytime. Again, it's the, uh, January twentieth, uh, which is a Thursday. It's the third Thursday. Um, I'm looking at right now on my screen here, separate, but an outline that we're putting together as to how the, how the process will go. And Jocelyn's gonna talk about, you know, what is an affordable housing plan, what the state mandate is. Um, and among other things and talking about the reasons why we're doing it and then how to proceed. So it, you know, hoping that a lot of people will come and ask questions. Um, but if you guys have any questions, I'm sure Jim or I could answer them. At some point down the road, you know, once this plan's in place, we can take a look at it, kind of like the town looks at the P O C D, the Town of, uh, Conservation Development, to see if there's anything that we wanna move ahead on and make recommendations for. So the plan is not a mandate, but an idea, you know, and the town can decide to do nothing with it or can decide to, um, take some of those ideas and, and develop them. So.
So if I could ask, will these, each of these individual plans from each of the towns, will these then take priority over the state's, um, affordable housing regulations or, because they have a percentage program right now that you can apply to develop a piece of property under their rules or a town's rules. So will it still be in that format or, or will one take precedent?
The, the town, the state will still, still has that precedent. So if that's the ten percent. So if the town has um, ten percent of, if it's, of its residences in affordable housing, meaning that's housing that is, uh, meets the state standards for affordability and that's the percentages based on the, um, housing costs. Then if that, if the town doesn't, then someone can come in and just say, I'm putting affordable housing in here and you can't say anything about it. That, that's what you're referring to, right?
Yeah, that if the town doesn't meet the ten percent threshold, they could use the state's regulations and.
Correct.
Develop a way.
That's right. Um, and we've had in our regulations, affordable, we've had affordable housing regulations in our zoning regs since nineteen ninety-four. So they've been in and, um, no one has taken us up on it because it costs too much to do it, because we don't have town water, town sewer, it's not cost effective. They can't make any money on it. So that's why no one comes. And if they're gonna do it, they've gone to Southbury, they've got, you know, and other towns where they're, where they have those facilities, um, to do it. So I think that's why we haven't, um, why the town hasn't kind of moved forward on, on anything like that. Now we, what we're finding in the committee is that, you know, people have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns about where, where am I gonna move when I wanna sell my house? And I wanna stay in town and I don't wanna have something big, you know, and it, it's tough because, you know, Roxbury is really kind of behind a lot of our surrounding towns. You know, you think about Washington, who has a variety of places regardless of affordability, you know, the, the state mandated or the state definition of affordable. You know, there's two different avenues that are, that are being discussed. One is that, right? That state definition and the other is the whole downsizing and alternative or um, there's a term and I'm losing it, but, um, the, the term for just, uh, a variety of housing options, you know, separate from affordable. So we're having these separate conversations at once, you know, as we go forward. So the plan hopefully will at least give some uh, some stats on what people feel in town in terms of the survey and then some suggestions on, on some options that we could have on both paths.
The, the age restricted housing that's in town, is that limited to residents only or can anyone sign up for those?
That was, um, that was put up using HUD money, so federal money. And because of that, it's based, it's.
It has to be open though.
It has to be open to everyone.
Yep.
So, you know, another option, um, and a lot of other towns are doing this too, is having, having a, um, a housing trust, uh, where it's independent, separate from the town and that people raise money. You know, it's its own five oh one three C, you know, uh, uh, nonprofit and, uh, that has its own restriction, you know, that a lot of towns have, like, you can't sell it for more than twenty-five percent of what you bought it for because you wanna keep it, um, affordable for someone else coming in. You know, and then there's a whole process of vetting process for who gets to, um, purchase it or live in it. Uh, there's a lot of area towns that have done a really good job with that. So, but, you know, you have to have people who wanna do that, you know, it, it's just all new to us. We've been living in the woods a long time, uh, and it's how to move forward with that. So.
So Kim, you're saying we're, uh, we're behind.
I would think we are. Yeah, we are. There's not, even I think, we are.
And, and kind of the way we're behind is we've priced ourselves, ourselves into like the country club prices. And there's, there's, how, how do you, if we, if we get used, if we can't do public water and public sewer, what can we do to bring the price down to, to substitute for that infrastructure?
Well, that's what the committee is gonna be discussing. So we have not gotten to that point yet and we're right now still gathering information and, uh, getting some uh, information that we can get out to people. So.
You need a hat and a rabbit, I think. It's gonna be a tough job.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree. You know, I think it's, um, you know, we've got people and I'm just, you know, just talking now as my Kim tester, my, right, as a resident, but, you know, you've got people who donate land to the land trust. You got people don't, you know, so it's like maybe that instead of doing that, they donate a piece of property to this organization that doesn't even exist yet, but once it does, and then you can build a house or there's a house that gets purchased uh, or land with a house that's, that's donated and just gets renovated and then sold at something small. And we still do have small homes in town. Um, but it's figuring out, you know.
Small homes are really expensive. The house next, the house next to the general store.
Yeah.
The town hall, I think, sold for almost four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Couple of months ago and it's twelve hundred eleven thousand, eleven hundred feet.
Yeah, I know, I know. And we're also talking about COVID, you know, so COVID has draw, has driven prices up and we're all very aware of that. We've had those discussions too. You know, people are all coming in. It's like, I mean, and honestly, you know, I've been in town this year forty years and you know, we started with this tiny little house that was a chicken coop that, that the boards underneath were still had petrified chicken poop under them, you know, and so renovated it and we did it and so we could make some money and sell it and then get something else. And, you know, it's, it's our property is our investment. So those are things that people are all concerned about and making sure they retain their investment. But, you know, now we're, we're also in that position where we want to make sure have people come into town who can afford to, to live here. So.
And in so doing and doing, keeping things status quo, we're really not keeping things status quo because, you know, we're gonna have to remove the rural character out of our regulations because that's an opinion type thing. We're, that's, that's, there's an end to statements like that, but
Right.
Uh, by not doing anything, which is what seems to be ninety, I don't know what percentage. There's a lot of big percentage in Roxbury that wants to do nothing, just keep the town as it is. But by doing that, the town is changing with the right, just with the regulations, since I've been here, no, no, nothing's really changed. There's probably thirty more new houses in town. And nothing has changed. So houses grew, but, uh, uh, but the enrollment in Booth School, we have a cool little town. It's really neat town.
Yeah.
The part of it is a school. Booth School used, I think, had a hundred and twelve kids in it. Now it has sixty-eight, I don't, um, maybe it's drastic. So by doing nothing, we're not things are changing and by not doing anything. But like I say, you know, I don't, I hope you can pull a rabbit out of your hat because it's, uh, I don't know how you're gonna do it. I'd like, if I were, if I were the dictator of town, I would say, keep it as it is, no changes, you know, I want the rural character. I'm not the dictator. We have to change our, our thought process because we're not. We're, we're caretakers. Dictator, so.
I, and I think it's a good thing that the state is mandated that we evaluate all of this, you know? I mean, it, it's important that we have the, the dialogue and Jocelyn, I think, has done a great job and will continue to do so and making sure that, you know, because she said many times, it's important that everyone in town have a voice. And so that's our goal is to make sure everyone can speak about it. So that's, I, that's what I got.
All right.
Do we have any questions on any of that?
Thanks, Kim. How'd you do, Jim?
Very good.
Okay.
All right. So that leads us to the chairman's report. And before. All right. So that leads us to the chairman's report. And before I mention that, I put in here commissioner input. That's us, you know, every meeting, you know, I found this 3-10-11 yesterday and I brought it up. I mean, if you have things in any meeting and we can join it with commission, the chairman's report each month, you know, bring things up, throw things in that you might think are interested or important to do and we'll, we'll discuss those things. We'll discuss them as part of the commissioner, the chairman's report. So that leads us to the chairman's report. And I kind of don't know how to do a chairman's report. I'm kind of, I feel like I'm kind of a dog, you know, a dog. Before it sits, lays down, it circles and circles and circles and finally it sits down. Well, I keep having ideas of what to say in a chairman's report and I go around and around, I'm still circling around. But if I had to, if I had to say anything, I wanted to bring up something, the role of, the basic role of zoning, you know, because there's a basic premise that lurks in us and I tried to simplify it, do a couple of sentences. And, you know, as, as, I think as zoning members, we're, we're, the zoning commission's a stewardship, is it not? And, you know, it's, and the stewardship is careful and responsible management is something entrusted to us to, to care for. And, you know, it's, that makes us responsible guardians furthering protection of public environment. You know, we're the guardians of tens of million, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of personal property. So that makes us really an important group. And, and I, I wanted to work this in because I wanted to review the role of alternate members. Tonight's a great example of the importance of alternate members because we're all freely talking. An alternate member just can't vote or can't discuss things after deliberation begins. So with all of us included and feeling equal and all listening except for voting and deliberating, discussing when deliberating, I think it demonstrates the importance of synergy. And I'm a great believer in synergy and defaulting to synergy. I learned that word a long time ago, flying all over the world, airliners all over the world. I never scratched a piece of aluminum in my whole 38 career, 38 year career. And I attribute that and credit that mostly to, I probably never had to be a captain more than two or three times in my life where I had to say, no, this is what we're gonna do. I always included my crew, the purges, the flight attendants, my co-pilot, my engineers. I always defaulted to synergy and it just was a wonderful tool and bailed me out all the time. So it's a basic premise. We're all equal in this role of synergy. And that's why I, I was an alternate member for a long, long time. I was an alternate member doing all this color coding. So there's plenty of things we can do. And we're just, except for voting, sometimes we're just all very, very important to this group. It'll work, should work pretty well. So, so that, that's, that's the chairman's report. I don't know.
I can, I, I can give you a suggestion on chairman's report. And basically, we're only supposed to discuss what's on the agenda. All right. But the chairman's report is a bit of a, an opening. If you, if something else and we didn't want it on the agenda right away, an agenda item, obviously, everybody is, looks at our agenda. And it's, we can discuss something under chairman's report to a point, just to get the ball rolling without having it on the agenda.
Okay.
You, you, it's, you keep that up your sleeve and if something's gotta be talked about.
If something tangible, you can fall back on.
Yep, chairman's report and then it's in there, it's legal. Yep.
Okay, good. So I have a question then on the agenda, because it talks about, and we're gonna leave it on there, reviewing regulations. So we can only review what's listed?
No, I think if it's the review of our regulations, that is a wide open door to me. I think you, yeah, because the public knows that's what we're going to be discussing, all regulations, the whole book. And if they want to come and join us, they can. It's just the transparency. And sometimes you want to discuss a few things before we open the door.
Okay.
Occasionally.
All right. So what's left? Communications? There aren't any communications, are there? Karen? Karen? Karen fell asleep. She got bored of the meeting. She's on mute.
Sorry, I muted myself by mistake. I was just going to say that if we wanted to reword that title on number three to make it sound a little more open and inclusive, we could probably do that.
Give me an ongoing review.
Yeah. And then, you know, as we have specific items that we know we want to discuss, we could list them under that, like we're doing tonight.
All right. So, you have a suggestion?
Um, not off the top of my head, but I'll think about it.
Okay, we can put that in next agenda. All right. So there are no communications, but oh, back to the chairman's report, which actually I, I guess I can throw this in because last, last month, Jim suggested something to me that I should look into having electronic zoning regulations. Instead of a loose leaf notebook folder that's out of date the week after it's printed. He suggested I should look into, what's a generic term, laptops or iPads or something like that. So I did. And I realized the whole region 12, all the kids in region 12 have Chromebooks. And I think Chromebook is kind of a generic name. But I found out that the zoning commission has a budget. And since we didn't have a wild Christmas party in Las Vegas that we all went out to, for the record, I'm justing for the record, that there's money to be spent. And Karen, it's out of the capital fund, is that correct?
That's my understanding. I'm gonna make sure that I have that straight, but that's my understanding as part of the budget.
I talked to Zora with Peter or with Patrick and that's when he informed me that the zoning commission has a budget. So we can vote right now to, just among us, to, or all agree, maybe not a vote, we just can all agree to invest in 10 Chromebooks or whatever they're supposed to be called. But we can right now decide to get Chromebooks for all of us and the Chromebooks will have, they'll be right by us all the time. We can get the regulations anytime we want and they're up to date.
What do they, what do they cost?
Well, it's little, I don't know, but I've heard $250 to $300.
And what's in our budget? What do we got in the budget?
We have $10,000, don't we, Karen?
Um, I've got to verify that, Bill. I, I know it was a separate fund originally. So I, I think it's, it's in a different part of the budget than our normal.
And I believe our legal.
That I do.
Don't forget legal fees, correct?
We don't have a specific line item in our budget for legal fees. That's a town hall item. As far as I know, because I've never seen that on, on the budget that I work on.
So the, I just purchased a Chromebook and it was $180.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, I mean, Bill and I have talked, I don't need one because I have a computer at home and I'm, you know, used to doing multiple things with it. So, but it might be very handy for someone to have the meeting up on one and to have access, easy access to the regulations, you know, from the town website that are up so that you can, we can actually go through things. So, you know, I think that's where, what he's.
Well, there, there are 10 of us, Elaine, Kim, Ellen, Jim, myself, Kenny, Chris, John, Cody, Karen and Julie. Uh, maybe, uh, maybe John and Karen and Julie don't need one because they have the one in the office. But I'm talking to Patrick and to Jimmy, herbert, we just thought we should try and plan. We're, we're gonna kind of be a trial balloon of a commission. That's how it'll be justified to have our Chromebook. So we have, it's very frustrating to not have something, you have your computer, but it'd be so nice to have some dedicated device with the regulations to that. So it's, it's been, it's been received well by everyone. And I would like to tell Jimmy to go ahead or whoever does it, maybe it's Karen, maybe it's Jimmy, it's not gonna be me, to go ahead and buy 10 Chromebooks.
Well, I think maybe just the number of people who want them, maybe. I don't think that you'll need 10, but.
Yeah, like, like Kim, I don't, I don't need one. I've got, not, not to boast, but I've got a couple of screens here where I've got the map and the regulations up, so.
You can, you can boast. But I think.
Save the money.
Yeah, I think, you know, but I do think, as I said, that for some, it's going to be easier having, having a second one, you know.
So should we get eight? Should we get six?
Well, I think we could just, everybody can just comment whether they need one or not because I have a desktop and an iPad, so I probably really don't need one.
Oh, wow. I'm feeling way, way behind.
No, 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 not at all. But I'm just saying, I, I'd hate to just spend it unnecessarily.
All right. So we could just agree to have some Chromebooks and Ellen can have one, I can have one and Elaine can have one.
Yeah, I have an iPad.
Do a poll if you want.
Yeah.
What's that?
I could do a poll if you want with everyone individually and see if they want one.
That's a good idea. That's a great idea, Karen. Yeah.
Okay. So it is a good idea.
And thank you, Bill, for doing the research on that. So I think it's nice to have an option.
All right. So we, we've got that in the works then. Maybe we'll have next meeting. Who's gonna teach me how to use it? Neighbor? All right. So that's it. Communications, we've got the Chromebooks announced. So is it time to adjourn this?
Yeah.
So I would look for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Will.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Yeah, Happy New Year.
Let's hope it's a good one.
I know.
Okay. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.